the Walnut Creek Planning Commission. At this time, I'll ask our Commission Secretary to please call the roll.
Commissioner Reiser?
Here.
Commissioner Nating?
Here.
Commissioner Lezak?
Here.
Commissioner Pickett?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
And Chair Ward?
Here.
And Vice Chair Strongman is absent.
Okay, thank you. So we have a quorum and we're ready to proceed. Next up on our agenda is the consent calendar, and I'd like to confirm that there are no items on the consent calendar today. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. With that, I'd like to move on to public communication. The public communication portion of the meeting is reserved for comment on items not on the agenda. This means comments that are not about the yoga center conditional use permit or the North Main shared use path rezone. Under the Brown Act, the Commission cannot act on items raised during public communications, but may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed, request clarification, or refer the item to staff. Additionally, I would like to remind everyone that hate, that all speech is not protected, and I will not tolerate or allow hate speech during public comment at any meeting that I chair. Hate has no place in our community, and our words must reflect our community commitment to equality and inclusion for all. With that being said, do we have any members of the public in the chamber who would like to make public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, do we have anybody online?
We do not have any attendees online.
Okay. All right, last call. All right, thank you. With that, we will move on then to public hearings. Next item on our agenda. First, I'd like to ask the members of the Commission if you've had any ex parte communications related to items on the agenda this evening. Yes?
Madam Chair, I have not had any ex parte communication, but I'll need to recuse myself from item 4A. The applicant is a member of my neighborhood, and based on property location, I think it's appropriate for me to step out for that item.
Okay, so we're doing 4A right now. So we will see you in moments. All right, thank you for that. Appreciate it. All right, any other comments from Commissioners or issues? All right, seeing none. Let's proceed then. We have first up, a staff presentation by Gerardo Victoria, our Assistant Planner.
Good evening Commissioners. My name is Gerardo Victoria, Assistant Planner with the Community Development Department. The project before you today is for a conditional use permit for the Mount Diablo Yoga Center, which is classified as a personal improvement service. The site is approximately a little bit over an acre big. It is located at 2121 Ignacio Valley Boulevard, excuse me, Ignacio Valley Road, tenant space E207. The zoning of the property is zoned office-commercial. The general plan designation is office. Generally, what you'll see at the doctor's park is a medical office and a professional office. The tenant space is approximately 1,029 square feet in size. The business hours are Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. Saturday and Sunday are by appointment only. The business offers, excuse me, services 25 to 30 clients a week, and offers approximately 12 to 14 classes a week. The project is not proposing any exterior modifications, and I did want to show the floor plan here. If I can just make it a little bit bigger, excuse me. As you can see, this is where the, the entrance is right here. There are stairs that lead up to the second story. This is their floor plan. This is the yoga studio right here. There's an entrance right here. This is like a lobby area where there's, they do sell yoga items accessory to the existing yoga studio. There's an office here in the back, and then there's the hallway here. The project is subject to conditional use permit findings contained in the Walnut Creek Muni Code. Staff finds that this project is consistent with the general plan and the zoning upon approval of a conditional use permit. Staff also finds that the existing tenants, tenant space is active and is compatible with the existing neighborhood as no exterior modifications are proposed. Staff also finds that the proposed project is not detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. No anticipated adverse impacts such as noise, litter, or other nuisances are expected. There are no additional findings required under the zoning district. Staff recommends to, move to determine that the proposed yoga studio is exempt from CEQA, and staff proposes to move to approve the conditional use permit application Y22082 subject to conditions of approval. I am available for any questions. The applicant is also in the audience, Monique Pickering, who is also available for questions.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions of the Commission? Commissioner Anderson?
Just a quick one. On the floor plan, I understand how the yoga studio works, but it's a second floor.
Yes.
And there's a little staircase indicated floating up there in the corner somewhere. But what is in fact actually, I assume the, the building continues on above that drawing?
It's a two-story building. The, the building does continue farther out. Is that what you're asking?
I'm, I'm just trying to figure out where they're entering from.
Oh, so this is the entrance to the building. So the stairs, these stairs are located right here in front. You just go up the stairs, and you're on the second story right here.
Okay, so stairs, okay.
Yes.
And that's, that hallway is an interior hallway?
This hallway is an interior hallway. So you can enter this-
I'm sorry.
Oh, this is an exterior hallway to other businesses.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out what's going on with the arrow is.
Yes. These, this is an exterior entrance, exterior hallway to the building on the second floor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the Commission? Commissioner Pickett?
Yeah, just a quick one. On your staff report, you mentioned that the project would generate pedestrian traffic along Ignacio Valley Road and Walnut Avenue. Is that really expected to? That just seems unlikely to me, but is there some expectation that we're going to get?
No, so the expected traffic is only for clients that have signed up for the, for the, for the yoga classes. What page was that?
You mentioned pedestrian activity along Ignacio Valley.
Can you point me to the page?
I'm not sure if that's, it's on page two of your staff report down at the bottom.
Page one?
Page two, bottom, under analysis use, says which will generate pedestrian traffic along Ignacio Valley Road and Walnut Avenue. It just struck me as curious as to how that generates traffic, pedestrian traffic.
It, it was poorly worded, and I can change that.
You don't have to change it. Just wondered if there was something I'm overlooking.
No, no, you're not overlooking anything.
Okay. That was my only question. Thank you.
Okay, great. Anything else? No? All right, thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing, and the applicant will have 15 minutes to make a presentation if they wish. Nothing to add? Okay. Okay, I, we can't hear you from there. If you want to come up to the microphone and say hello, maybe, that would be great.
All right, come on up, introduce yourself. Hello?
Hi, my name is Monique Pickering, and yeah, I'm the applicant for the yoga studio.
Fantastic. Okay, so any Commissioner questions for the applicant? Come on, I dragged her up here now.
Yeah, I don't have a presentation. I don't know.
No, that's fine. You don't need one, but it's nice that you're here to answer questions. We do appreciate it. All right, so it looks like there's nothing now, so if you want to sit down, that's fine, but thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Okay, there being no questions from Commissioners, it's time to ask if any member of the public wishes to provide public comment at this time regarding this agenda item. So I see no one in the chambers. Do we have anyone online who is looking to make public comment?
We do not have any attendees on Zoom.
Okay, excellent. So this would be when I ask, give you the opportunity to respond to any public comment, but being that there is none, I assume that you also have no response. So we'll keep moving along here. So I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and bring it back to the Commission for any comments, questions, or deliberations, possibly even in motion. Commissioner Anderson?
I'll move the approval of application Y22082.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Commission Secretary, can you please record the vote?
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Nating?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Ward?
Yes.
Thank you. And Commissioner Lezak has recused himself, and Vice Chair Strongman is absent.
Okay, excellent. So let's take one or two minutes to retrieve Commissioner Lezak, so he can come back and rejoin us.[1581.83] rejoin us. I'd like to move on to Agenda Item 4B, which is the North Main Shared Use Path Rezone, zoning map amendment application. Little words here. Y 23-052, 2211 North Main Street. And it looks like we're gonna, again, pinch hitting for Simmergill, we have Chip Griffin. We're gonna get you walk-up music pretty soon if this keeps up, right?
Check, check, yep, okay. Good evening, I'm Chip Griffin, a principal planner here with the city's current planning division. Thank you, Chair. Tonight, we're going to do a study session, hopefully make a recommendation to the city council for a zoning map amendment. We're calling it the North Main Shared Use, or North Main Road Diet, depending on what you're looking at, zoning map amendments. It's application number 23052. The scope would include just an amendment, the zoning map, the zoning map has a couple different versions, not versions, but sheets. And sheet two of the zoning map includes a couple things. I think it has some building heights on it, but among other thing, it has future street setbacks, which are, think of them as right-of-way widths. And the north downtown specific plan increased some sections of the right-of-ways. In this case, it increased at eight feet. So the zoning, this zoning map amendment would change that section of North Main back to, from approximately Parkside Drive to where we're transitioning to the North California, transition it back to 60, for that half, anyway. The action will eventually cause elimination of a vehicle lane. There's two lanes, there's four lanes, two of them split down North Main, two of them split to California. And that would ultimately, the intent is to accommodate the space for a shared-use path that's visualized in the north downtown specific plan. Context, we've got, here's an aerial view here, and you can see, where is my, there it is. Here'd be the northerly extent of this area on this yellow line. That's just a couple of hundred feet north of the Parkside intersection, just, just north of the Marriott. That would become a channelized right-hand turn lane, and then from here down would be, would be that, is that other section of road. And you can see here, for context, I think we all know where this is, but this is the Marriott here, this is Jack in the Box, Taco Tuesday, and then we've got, I think it's, is it, that's the Bentley motor cars or the Lamborghinis, whatever they're. And then down at the end here, we have 2211 North Main, which used to be the home of La Verage. And since, since that building went away, it's been a parking lot for various uses, vehicle storage, parking. I believe we, this planning commission granted a special use permit for food trucks and the like. So it's been underutilized, there's been a project that's approved on it, was, was found to be unbuildable. And the new, the new owner, Sean Joy, who's here, is looking for, was, was looking for ways to, he's looking to, looking to develop it, but that eight-foot of dedication really hurt him a little bit. So we looked at ways to, looked at things, what we could do, what could be done, and this kind of became a, you know, a, well, we, let's take a look at this. So the zoning there is mixed-use plan development. Of course, the roadway isn't zoned that way, but the properties on that west side of the roadway are. And it's, of course, mostly in the general plan, mixed-use golden triangle area with a lot of office buildings. And this graphic on the right is taken from that, the road diet traffic study. So here's, here's the zoning map, this is zoning map sheet S2, and the square is, is over here, and you can see the lavender-colored section, and that's the section we're talking about. And down here, you can see the lavender-colored section is 108 feet. That's the full future right-of-way width. And it has an asterisk there because the, typically, a right-of-way would be 50 on this side, 50 on that side, or half on this side, half on that side, which is, for example, this 100-foot one is just like that, it'd be 50 and 50. But where there's an asterisk, they're, they're split, they're, they're, they're not 50/50. So in this case, in the 108-foot case, you can see that up here in this graphic, you would have 40 feet on the east side, that's this side, and then 68 feet on this side. So we're talking, we're really, if we want to boil it down, we're talking about that west side, that 68-foot portion of the right-of-way. So then, this is a, these are sections of this, of this, of this roadway as envisioned in the north downtown specific plan. On the left is the current situation. You see, we've, we've got the four travel lanes, these two, North Main, these two, North California sidewalk, and then we have the one-story commercial buildings here. What's envisioned is, is same four lanes, but, but right here, of course, we're going to increase this pedestrian bicycle area for a share, a protected shared-use path. And you can see that, that in order to do that, you needed a, a take. If you, like, in this graphic, that building is, is, the frontage of that building would be right there-ish. So what essentially what we're doing is taking away that eight-foot and, and the drive lane and putting the, let's say, this is the, the portion of the 14-foot, or 18-foot section when you get the landscape buffer in there. The map amendment would eliminate that eight-foot dedication along this entire stretch. It preserves the lot depth for potential future assemblage of these properties, and preserves the development potential of these, of these properties. It eliminates an underutilized traffic lane and preserves the, the vision of the north downtown specific plan to provide that shared-use path. In your packet, you have a focused transportation analysis, and that's the road diet, the road diet study. It, it finds that, and, and, it finds that, it would repurpose an underutilized lane, it could accommodate parking or, or loading if necessary, depending on how it's designed. It's not forecast to result in any significant effect to traffic, there were found to be no, no environmental impacts. And it would provide additional buffer between vehicular traffic, pedestrians, and bicyclists. This is an actual photo of it, this, this property here is 2211 North Main, and you can see, you can see this, this is the underutilized travel lane. The findings, there's, there's, there's real, there's really no required findings to do a rezone, to do this map amendment. We would like to make findings. These, these findings are, are similar to the findings you would need to make or to adopt a planned development zoning, in that it's, it furthers the intent of the general plan. It complies with the regulations and provisions of the general plan, and specifically, a specific plan in this case, the north downtown specific plan, and it provides the standards for general public health, safety, and welfare, and that would be, of course, it's a shared-use protected path. With that, staff would recommend that the planning commission determine that this project is exempt from CEQA and approve, well, that shouldn't say approve, that should say recommend approval to the city council for the proposed zoning map amendment. Here tonight also is Smidare Boardman, she's our traffic engineer, and she's, she's available for any questions you might have. With that, questions to staff?
Okay, thank you for that, much appreciated. I do have a question, I'll start off. Can you speak a little more to the situation with regard to pedestrians, specifically, with the old and new situation? As it appears that currently, the pedestrians are protected from all vehicle interaction, but in the new plan, there is no protection for them with interaction between-
They're-
-vehicles in the form of bicycles.
So the, if you, let me go back to the section from the north downtown specific plan. So what, what this does, let me go back one more. What this includes is a, is a shared-use path for bicycles here in the blue, pedestrians here in the yellow, of course, this is conceptual. And then there is a, a, a buffer here with a raised curb, and landscaping includes trees, and that would be, that would be the buffer, that's the safety-
Right, I see the buffer between the cars and the bicycles. That makes sense to me. What I see in the existing plan is a buffer between pedestrians and vehicles, and I don't see any buffer between pedestrians and vehicles in the new plan. I know you consider a shared path to be protecting them, but I have concerns with regard to cyclists and pedestrians interacting.
Cyclists and, okay.
It does not bode well for the pedestrians generally, and I wondered if there was any physical or paint or anything that separates the pedestrians from the cyclists in the shared pathway.
Yes, Smidare Boardman, Traffic Engineer. So this is just a concept plan from the north downtown specific plan, but best practice for providing a shared-use path that is separated between having a pedestrian space and an area for the cyclists. So what this is showing is, and it's a little small, and I may pull up-
It's really small, like, some of us have old eyes here.
I, I have old eyes. So, so the, the numbers are a little bigger here, and this is, you know, the op, the option, which is, you know, part of what we're bringing to you tonight. But at least you can see here, so there's six feet of sidewalk, and then there would be an eight-foot bikeway that accommodates two-way bike traffic. That would be delineated with some kind of striping, or we can use a different type of material to make it very clear that that area is specifically sectioned off for cyclists. Likewise, the sidewalk would probably just be your typical sidewalk-looking area, and so depending on how we design it, depending on the, the volumes, the bicycle volumes we may use, which again is typical for like best practice in this type of design, we could use planters and, like, in-between, or some other type of material to, to separate those cyclists from the pedestrians.
So there's a possibility of a physical barrier between the cyclists and pedestrians, but there's nothing required with regard to this. But it does look like there's a difference in materials and, or paint or something, it's not 14 feet of free-for-all here, there's actually a delineated space for pedestrians and a separate space for cyclists, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, other questions from the commission? For Commissioner Pickett?
Yeah, so the drawing that's up, this is, this fits in that 60-foot right-of-way, existing 60-foot right-of-way?
Yes, so that should add up to 60.
Okay, so this shows four lanes, and I, it was my understanding we were eliminating a lane.
So this is showing parking, which would be eight feet.
Okay, so the park, oh, I'm sorry, the parking is that, so it's three travel lanes. So it just seems a little bit contradictory that we're giving up a space for traffic when traffic is one of the biggest problems we have in Walnut Creek. And I understand that the traffic report says we can, we can afford to lose the lane today, but how far in adv, I mean, how far did they forecast this not being a problem? Because I, once we give this up, we never get it back. So right now, people would love to have more right-of-way on Ignatia Valley Road. And as, you know, congestion and everything increases, development occurs downtown, in 10 years, the traffic on this is going to be much different than it is today, would be my speculation. So what, what thought has been given to that? I'm very, and I, I know that the specific plan said do something like this, but their solution was to get the right-of-way. If we give that up, we never get it back. So what, what kind of forethought was given to that?
Absolutely. So the, the traffic report does forecast into 2040, year 2040, and I can bring up that right now. So here you can see the, the analysis that was conducted, and so this is for the Parkside-North Main intersection, just looking at levels of service, what would change. And so you can see the change, the difference here under the four-traveling condition versus the three-traveling condition. And again, this is looking at level of service, and then delay measures the number of seconds that vehicles typically experience at the intersection, and are assigned a letter grade. And so you can see the difference during the morning, you know, given this existing traffic volume condition, it's about a half-second increase, and then during the PM, it actually reduces. So what, this, this amount of delay is barely quantifiable fundamentally from, you know, the methodology that we actually use. So I know it shows negative .1 seconds, it's actually because we actually have a higher churning volume going southbound, making a right turn from North Main onto Parkside, giving them their own right-turn lane where they're able to conduct right turns on red, not having to wait for the green light actually helps things out. And then you can see in the 2040 condition, similarly, you know, it's plus half a second, and then minus three seconds. Again, this is because of that condition where there is an expectation that that right-turn volume would increase over time, providing them with their own lane actually functions better in terms of the way that we do our methodology, or the methodology that we, that we use to do this type of analysis.
Okay, something I didn't understand on this drawing, you can explain it to me. On the four-lane scenario, on the left side, it has a red something or other, it shows a straight ahead and a left turn, a right turn. And in the three-lane scenario, it shows just a right turn. So what, do we have a drawing that shows what this lane realignment's gonna look like? Do we have something other than the schematic?
So, no, we don't have anything like that put together. This is really a concept-level discussion, but we do have that cross-section that I showed previously, which I can bring back onto the screen.
Yeah, bring that up, please. Okay, so this, this is what it would, would look like, and the, the lane that is shown as 11-foot lane, third one over from the right, is the lane that would proceed forward on California, correct?
That's right. And then after you get around that 2211 North Main parcel, it would open back up to two lanes. So there is no change to the Pringle and, and California intersection.
So what happens is on, from the intersection with California north, it bottlenecks down to one lane for that section, and then it opens back up to, that single lane will then merge into two, two lanes south of Pringle.
Sure, it's, it's not exactly a bottleneck because at the North Main-Parkside intersection, as you're going southbound from the freeway off-ramp, let's say, you're going towards Parkside, you now have a dedicated right-turn lane. So typically, when we talk about bottlenecks, it means that we're doing some kind of merge maneuver on a, on a segment, and that can cause a lot of ripple effect. But this is a situation where we're actually taking care of that at the intersection itself and pushing higher volumes into a lane that's dedicated.
So you see, I'm looking at the map here.
Sure.
Thank goodness for Google Maps. Never have to go anywhere to look at stuff anymore. Anyhow, so, so, but what happens, if somebody is in the right, currently, if someone's in the right-hand lane, heading south, they have the opportunity to go straight or make a right-hand turn.
Yes.
If they want to go straight, they are gonna have to shift over a lane, therefore, the definition of a bottleneck, you're merging two lanes into one in that section of North Main Street.
So it actually can be just a trap lane, it's almost like an auxiliary lane, so we can stripe it that way.
I drive it all the time, I go straight ahead.
Sure.
You know? And people do, and they, they're juggling around, there's a lot of confusion, people going southbound where they need to be if they want to go on Main, or if they want to go on California.
Yes.
You're, you're eliminating or reducing the maneuvering opportunities by cutting a lane out of there.
So I would say actually, from a traffic safety perspective, this, this section in particular because of the number of lanes and given the volume that actually uses this segment, we actually provide more opportunity for folks to speed, which makes it more difficult to maneuver between the lanes. And that is part of that underutilized lane sort of justification, is that that lane is providing additional capacity that's actually excess. And so what it does is in turn, gives people more space to be able to speed and make these dangerous maneuvers. And so by, by eliminating this lane, it provides, it, it can help direct traffic in a way where we're actually functionally using these lanes to, not fully to its capacity, but just to a level where we're not exceeding what is necessary in the built environment.
What's the speed limit there?
It's 35.
Do we have a speed study that's, I mean, again, I drive on that section all the time, and I haven't observed any of the things you're talking about, speeding people or danger or anything else, it's just there's, there is maneuvering, people who are in the right-hand lane need to get over to go straight, they don't understand they have to go straight on, on Main Street. So I'm not really kind of, and that, I don't, was that addressed in the traffic report? You just do traffic counts?
So the, the traffic report itself looks at traffic counts and level of service at the, and looked at level of service at the intersection. We have our own engineering traffic surveys, which dictate what we post our speed limit at, and that is a separate document that has, that's not part of this application. And then in addition, we do have our local roadway safety plan, which I think I've mentioned before to you all, but that really speaks to some of the types of conditions that we are able to look at from a systemic standpoint, understanding that we have certain issues in the city by providing wide lanes, wide travel lanes, and multiple lanes. It does result in, it can result in increased speed. And so that is called out as one of our crash profiles in the local roadway safety plan.
So the motivation of this is that the specific plan came up with this idea, and their idea required the taking up some property. And now we have a landowner who wants to develop the property, and it impinges his ability to develop it feasibly because of what somebody dreamed up in the specific plan, however many years ago, that took forever to do. Is there another solution besides giving up our right-of-way? I just think it's a bad idea to give up right-of-way. We'll never get it back. And how many places around Walnut Creek do people complain about? We'll never get it back. And how many places around Waller Creek do people complain about not being able to put in a, something we need for traffic? Anyhow, so the motivation is that we have a landowner who would like to develop some property, and this has a significant impact on his opportunity. Is that what started this thinking?
So, yes.
Okay, I, I, I have a better understanding of it, thank you.
Okay, other questions from commissioners? Commissioner Le- Leeding, Needing, I'm sorry, I can't speak this evening. Commissioner Needing?
Sorry, I'm looking at the attachment six. And I think, I'm, I'm confused because I thought what you showed here was that the that the last travel lane, which is underutilized, would become parking?
So just to, oh, I see. So what's shown in, in that attachment is just the existing conditions and the proposed future conditions based on the North Downtown specific plan. What those future, what the alternative is that we're presenting this evening is just on the PowerPoint. But just to clarify, yeah, just to clarify, um, the way that we're able to eke out some parking, which we, we could use that space for, is by narrowing the travel lanes. So there is a benefit to that, too. Um, but there is not enough space to be able to still provide a fourth travel lane. So we could use that space for, for parking that would, um, and loading, which is already occurring right now um, in terms of operations. There are plenty of, um, folks who already park in that travel lane currently.
So the, where you guys would like to do is, sorry, can you go back to the?
Oh, the cross-section?
Yes, please. So that would move the sidewalk buffer, the buffer, it'd move the buffer with the trees, the landscape buffer, in this condition, right? Cause the ten, ten-eleven is existing, and then the eight decreases from a twelve, so the four-foot buffer would move in, is that correct?
Yeah, it would get closer to the median by a few feet.
Got it. I'm digesting, I'm gonna stop, I'm gonna turn this off.
All right, I have a question while you have this up. Um, could the bikeway and the buffer be swapped?
I would, uh, no, no, it can't.
Okay, cause the parked cars provide a buffer between the bikes and the cars, but there's no buffer.
There's still some required, uh, distance between the door opening space and the bikeway, and we wouldn't be able to fit, um, all of those things if we swapped that.
Okay. Other questions? Commissioner Pickett?
Uh, one more question. Why, why don't we just change the specific plan? It's a lot easier.
Well, the, the, with this, with this map amendment, the intent of the specific plan would still be met.
Okay, but if we change the specific plan, we don't lose a travel lane?
Well, it's the zoning map, though, that shows the numbers. That shows the sixty-eight. And right now, we only have sixty.
Okay, so the zoning map has been changed?
But that's, that's, that's what.
Was that zoning map changed the result of the specific plan?
Yeah, so the zoning map was changed to be consistent with the specific plan.
So we'd have to change the zoning map, then?
That's what we're doing tonight. That's what we're making the recommendation on tonight.
But that requires the elimination of a travel lane?
Correct.
So how do we accomplish this without losing a travel lane? How do we, how do we preserve the setback on the private property? How do we avoid taking land out of the private property and preserve the travel lane?
Are, are you asking me if, if, why is, why, why is, does the specific plan not to be, not need to be amended?
No, I just wanna know why this is the, I mean, I, I would think there's other solutions than this, than giving up travel lane on a, on a key, key roadway into downtown Waller Creek.
Sure, so, um, just to look, just looking at this cross-section again, there is no opportunity to preserve a travel lane and still fulfill the vision of the North Downtown specific plan if you were to preserve that travel lane and not get rid of.
I'm suggesting that the vision of the downtowns, or the, what was this?
Of the North Downtown specific plan?
North Downtown specific plan might need to be amended. Maybe the vision is the problem.
Are you suggesting that we shouldn't have space for a bikeway or sidewalk?
I don't know how you'd design it differently, but that might be the, the casualty. The casualty might be the bike lane that doesn't exist today, that isn't there, versus a travel lane that does exist and gets used every day. So I think we're maybe setting our priorities wrong, but.
Okay, I would just throw out there that this is within, well within range of BART. And this was envisioned, again, in the North Downtown specific plan as an access point to the BART station. And the other uses that are there, there's some restaurants, bars, whatever else, um, and does align with the city's sustainability goals.
I do appreciate that it's an access point to BART, and getting people on bikes to BART is really nice. So I, I recognize that, thank you.
Commissioner Needing?
What, so here we're looking at, it's a directional bike lane, you're assuming, is that correct?
You're asking if it's a bidirectional bike, bikeway?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it looks like, is, was, what's the smallest bike lane, is it fi- five feet?
So a one-way bike lane is five feet, depending on where you are. But for the purpose of what we're talking about, which is a shared-use path, four feet is the minimum for a single direction. Eight feet is the absolute minimum that you can go for a bikeway, for this two-way bikeway.
Cause thi- this essentially is acting like a class-one trail?
That's, it's a class-one trail.
It's a class-one.
It is, yes. Where it's actually, we've separated out the pedestrian and bicycle traffic, though, but yes.
And you're saying that it couldn't be a class-three trail because of door swings?
Do you mean class-four?
Maybe?
Maybe?
I'm forgetting my classes. I knew this was a class-one. It's the one where the bikes have their own in-the-street.
Like an in-street bikeway, yeah. Um, so you still have to, between, between the parking and the bicycles, you need three feet of clearance, lateral clearance. So that's not a lot, so we, we could do that. But the intent of this plan is, long-term vision is to actually provide a super-high-quality connection to BART, also connecting to the additional, um, uh, future development in the North Downtown area. So it's not supposed, it's not intended to be on-street, it's not envisioned to be on-street.
And then this plan that we see here would change it from, did I see LOS D to LOS E? Maybe I read that wrong.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's just D to, it basically stays the same, except for the, during the AM, uh, under existing conditions, it goes from LOS C to LOS D.
But you do go C to E.
It goes from C to D during that AM condition, existing.
And then in twenty forty, in the PM, we're looking at E.
It's already, it's already going to be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I, thank you.
Sure.
Other questions from commissioners? Okay, um, is the city the applicant, or is there an applicant applicant?
The applicant, Sean Joy, is here. He did not prepare a presentation. Um, I, I requested that he didn't.
Okay, all right.
Or, I should say, I suggested that he didn't.
So this is, so he's made an application with regard to his property, and this is, uh, connected with that regarding the developab- developability of it. It's not the city on its own initiative trying to implement the North Downtown specific plan
Correct.
through this realignment. Okay, all right, so no presentation. So no question, do, do?
You could ask questions of.
We can ask questions, so. Do any commissioners have questions for the applicant at this time? No. Okay, so now it's time for members of the public who wish to comment on this agenda item. Three-minute time limit, and I think we have somebody in the chamber, so let's start with you.
Um, I'm wondering if I may get an extension if necessary, because I'm, I came here with a certain understanding of, um, the roadway width and things like that, and what was online and all the documents prepared, I'm finding out they're, are different than what I had been making comment on. But if, if you think necessary, that, that's all.
I think three minutes is a good start, so why don't we stick to that?
Okay, it certainly is a good start.
Thank you.
I'm Michael Vecchio, I'm a resident of Waller Creek, and I'm a bicyclist. I, I like the idea of the proposal to prohibit, get rid of the, um, the moving lane of traffic. I think that's, that's fine. It's being used largely as a truck parking zone anyway, so, uh, that component of the project, um, I'm fine with. The, the issue that I have concerns about are, is the shared-use path. And I have some comments, I'll go through them, but again, some of my comments have changed, and maybe I'll just have to make those out written, submit them separately because of the information I got tonight that was not available. Okay, I have three, three comments. One is how would the bicycles coming from both directions enter and exit the shared-use path? That's always an issue with shared-use paths, and I'm not sure how that, that would happen, especially for the standalone section, maybe in the final, um, project of the shared-use lane from California uh, in Parkside all the way down to BART, maybe that would be resolved, but the standalone section is, is a concern for me. Uh, second point, the West Downtown specific plan calls for a class-two facility south of Pringle. Um, I'm wondering if it'd be wise to, and a better thing, to have a, the proposed shared-use facility to start at Parkside, go down to California, go down to Pringle, and even go a little bit further down to the existing mid-block pedestrian crossing at, um, at the BART station. That way you get good connectivity, and everybody from BART can see it and, and, uh, get the benefits of a shared-use, um, uh, bike path. Number three, um, uh, you know, I'm not sure how pedestrians and bicyclists and the, um, the doors that are opening from the fronting businesses, you need, you, you, there's a, now, now that I see the plan, um, some of my comments aren't maybe as relevant, but there's a four-foot planter strip that would have the fire hydrants, the streetlight poles, the signal poles, the street signs, those types of things. So you, you've gotten that, that wasn't presented in any of the materials, so I was concerned about that. With a four-foot planter strip, maybe that's going to disappear. Finally, um, I'm thinking that there, there may be some other ways to, you know, um, I, I whispered that, you know, maybe use the eleven-foot median that's there, um, and eat into that a little bit to get some extra width to be able to accommodate, uh, um, the class-one facility even safer and separate it from, from the businesses. The Bike Master Plan was approved in two thousand and eleven, and I don't know if there's been any, um, updates to that or not. And, um, if not, then I think this would be a time to update that Bike Master Plan, um, to reflect what's being proposed. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, do we have any other members of the public wish to provide comment at this time?
There are no attendees online.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no additional speakers, I guess this is the chance for the applicant to respond to public comment or the concerns of the commission, if you'd like. Come on up.
How you doing? I'm Sean Joy, I'm the applicant here. Um, I think, uh, the main point of the, the bike lanes, whether this proceeds or not, it stays the same, right? The idea is to preserve that bike pedestrian traffic getting towards BART, right? Whether it's a class-one or, or four, that's not the issue. The issue really is preserving, upgrading that pedestrian-bike access through that area. That's the, that's the intent of this, both what I'm proposing and what the, uh, city wanted with the North Downtown specific plan. So, I don't know if that.
Okay, thank you very much for that, appreciate it. All right, do we have any, uh, additional commissioner questions or the like? Oh, I'm closing the public hearing and bringing it back to the commission for comments, questions, deliberation. Commissioner Anderson?
I might like to, um, disagree with my esteemed colleague to my right. I, I live north, north end of town, and I work in the south end of town, so I drive this area quite a bit. I did not come in here. And I, I think the fact is, uh, it isn't underutilized. The four lanes are underutilized. Um, also, as you come over the hill from, uh, North Main Street farther up, it's, um, uh, you've got four lanes and, and you can see everybody's trying to figure out where the four lanes are going, cause it's not entirely clear. And as you get past Taco Bell and toward that intersection, then there's the final sorting. I think actually three lanes would be a little bit easier to handle. Especially if it's, if it's, uh, you know, signed and, you know, the right-turn lane is marked as a sole right-turn lane and so forth. But I think, you know, there, um, I think there's not that much traffic on it, frankly. Uh, the only time there's ever slowed down is going northbound. Um, sometimes it backs up at the light for a bit, but, um, not, not with the four-lane sections. Um, I, I don't think that fourth lane is necessary. Uh, as far as, um, redoing the specific plan, uh, you know, specific plan's been there for a while, it's, it's, you know, a lot of work was put into it. This whole kind of, uh, bike access is, is in the bike plans as well, it's the specific plan. And I've also ride my bike sometimes, and if I come down, you know, on Parkside, the chance to go down Main Street, my office on the south side is on Main Street, so that would seem logical, but, um, I try to avoid places like this where the traffic does speed up. And so when I ride my bike, I actually go about four or five blocks over to the east, to the Iron Horse Trail, down to Newell and cut back over. Um, it adds about a mile and a half, I think, to, to the route, but it's, uh, it's safer. So I, I think this is, um, I think it's a good plan. I think it, uh, it works. As pointed out, you know, uh, trucks do stop in that lane anyway. Um, and making it a little narrower and for stopped traffic, um, helps a lot. The idea that, you know, you don't really need the bicycles there, well, if bicycles do, on that thing, instead of, um, being on a separated bicycle lane, they're riding in the traffic, cause there is no bike lane in the street, there's no separation at all. And, uh, you know, trying to ride in a, a, an automobile lane where people are going at least thirty-five, cause that's the speed limit, uh, it's a kind of a dangerous place to be. So I, I, I think this is a, a much improvement, and I suspect that over time, as the, uh, the bicycle pedestrian way gets extended further out, it's gonna be a, a great benefit and work much better than what we've got now. So I'm in favor of it.
Hey, anybody else? Commissioner Pickett?
Yeah, uh, good arguments, Brent, but I, I still believe that it's inappropriate for the city to conceive a plan that is ultimately gonna sacrifice a travel lane that, you know, does, it, does, the loss of it does impact traffic. You know, a C to a D, uh, in the morning traffic, you know, maybe, that's not bad, but I, I think it's. but I, I think it's a wrong solution to the problem. The problem is, the applicant, the property owner, is penalized by the vision of the specific plan. And I think there, the failure is that, and we shouldn't have to be talking about this. So I don't think it's the right solution, I think the solution is deeper than that. And so I would oppose this as being our solution. I don't want to penalize the applicant. You know, just because he owns property, we want to take some from him to make, make our, our dream work. But we ought to come up with a better solution. You know, did anybody look at eliminating the median? Look what's happening on the east side, I don't think so. So I, I, I wouldn't approve or support this.
Anybody else? All right, well, I, I'll just reiterate my prior concern that I think shared-use lanes are not safe for pedestrians, and I think, um, that there has to be a better way to protect pedestrians. And I, I do live in this area, and there are a lot of people walking around, a lot. Um, and it's not a particularly safe street. And so to take away, to, to force, um, interaction with vehicles on pedestrians in an already dangerous area does not seem wise to me. So it's disappointing that that appears to be the solution here. Any other comments? Commissioner Lezak.
So a lot of great comments on both sides. You know, there really isn't an, an easier ideal solution here. Clearly, the lane itself is a problem just because of the, there's no access to these businesses, that they are double parking, and that parking piece solves what's already an existing problem. We do need, uh, I do support the vision of, of the specific plan in terms of the, the bicycle connectivity in the trail. Uh, I do agree that, you know, that, that eight feet is a fairly, is, you know, as described as a minimal amount of space. And I, well, I don't have one yet, one day I will have an e-bike, and I will be traveling this path at higher speeds than, maybe I'll need to be in the street at that point. But, uh, I, I think that that's a concern, and, and Commissioner Pickett's concern about giving up a lane to future traffic is, is real. Like, we, we need to not be just planning, uh, for the next couple of years, we need to be planning for the longer term. So, uh, while I personally, uh, am generally supportive of the concept, I would agree that, you know, maybe there should be some further thought, thought and analysis to the entire section. If, if literally we're talking about a foot here or a foot there, maybe there is a possibility to look at the median. Uh, maybe there is an opportunity to look at the other side of the street, though I, I think the median maybe is the, the better spot. So I'm not completely convinced that because of the way the application came forward, that the city has considered this as well as they could have. And maybe I'm supporting a different direction, which is, you know, rather than, maybe it's denial, but rather than, maybe it'd be denial, maybe it'd be direction for the city staff to go back and, uh, study this a little bit more and come back with some additional options. Um, I suppose if you showed me all the other options and convinced me that this is the only way to do this, I could be supportive, because I, I understand that this is just a challenge of trying to balance a lot of conflicting interests. So those are my thoughts, thank you.
Okay, thank you. You have other commissioner comments? Questions? All right, seeing none at this time, I would entertain a motion. Do we have a motion?
I, I like the idea, I don't really have a motion, but I do like the idea of, um, having the, the city evaluate alternatives to this. I don't think it's the best solution, and I appreciate what Peter had to say, and I do appreciate what Brent had to say. And I do appreciate that this is a pathway in the future to BART. So accomplishing that vision of the specific plan is an optimal solution, but I think in terms of how we accomplish that in the long run, I don't think the proposal, the drawings and the study that we've done is adequate to convince me. So maybe we can craft something that allows us to ask the continuance with staff studying alternatives to this solution in order to accomplish the dream of the specific plan.
Um, and we could do that, we could vote on this motion, on the resolution that's before us?
Another option, since we're being asked to forward a recommendation to the city council, that recommendation might be, um, you know, evaluate other scenarios with bicycle separated pedestrians, for example. Or, you know, there's, just kind of, uh, I think the idea of getting, you know, getting options, maybe the city council, it's just a recommendation, have the staff go back, you know, and look at other, you know, to get, to bring to the planning commission options, three, four options.
All right, um.
Different, to address some of these questions.
First declare, hello. Welcome to the Planning Commission. So if, if you could give us a little bit of guidance with regard to our options in terms of.
Hi, I'm by heart, so the Planning Commission, you could, so you could make a recommendation to the city council with those directions, or you could choose to continue this item to a future date, um, you know, for, to a date uncertain, or if you like, to bring back at a date certain. And with the directions that city staff further look into alternative options, and then present it back to the planning commission so that at that time, you can make a recommendation to the council with that information. So if you like, you know, there is an option that the commission prefers, you could, you could do that.
Or we can just.
You, or you could vote on the resolution.
Deny it and.
And not, and not, not, not make a recommendation to the, to the council.
Okay.
I, I don't like punting things to the city council every time we run into an obstacle, so I would either support denying the application or probably prefer the continuance with some additional work on it. I think that's a more efficient way for our city to operate. Maybe we can address some of the other issues that were raised about the suitability, suitability of an eight-foot double bicycle lane and everything else, but.
I'd support our continuance.
So I, let me try to craft this, I would move.
I was gonna say, could I, could we have this in the form of a motion, please? That would be great.
Yeah, so I, I would move that we continue this item to a unspecified date to allow the staff and the applicant to study some alternatives to this solution in order to accomplish the goal of getting the sidewalk that we want to see based on the vision of the specific plan. Is that clear?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Commission secretary, can you please take the role?
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Needing?
Yes.
Commissioner Lezak?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Ward?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Strongman is absent, the motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate the thoughtful comments and, uh, alternative solutions. Um, so at this time, I'd like to move on to Agenda Item Five, Commission Considerations. Do we have, um, any, anything to consider from our, our staff?
None at this time.
Okay, thank you. Um, and so we'll move on to Six, Commission Member and Staff Reports or Announcements. Does anybody have a report or announcement to make?
Staff does not, perhaps the commissioner.
Announcement. Or a comment.
Commissioner, Commissioner Pickett.
I don't know what it is.
All right, this is your time.
For the last, uh, I don't know, ten or twelve years, maybe, maybe less, I've been, I've been serving as the City of Wallon Creek's Planning Commission Representative on TransPAC, which is a regional transportation advisory committee to the Contra-Costa Transportation Authority. And my, I'm, I'm doing this way in advance. My term is, my life is up as a planning commissioner, I believe, in February or March.
You could run again.
So somebody is gonna have to step up. You don't have to, but I'm just saying, there's gonna be a vacancy. If you want to learn about tra, it's, it's been a fascinating role, you don't get a vote. You get to express your opinion, but, uh, the voting is limited to elected officials. So the city council members from five cities participate in that, and one county supervisor for this area participates in it. And they are an advisory committee to the Contra-Costa Transportation Authority. But that position is going to be vacant come the beginning of next year. And whoever has a penchant for traffic problems, that's a good, good place to go, amuse yourself. So, yeah.
All right, thank you for that.
Four months to think about it.
Well, I think you know that many of us are very enthused about traffic and the like, so I, um, appreciate that, we'll start our wrangling and maneuvering for that spot.
Experience on the Transportation Commission was highly recommended for that.
Hey, I'm not the only one, you don't have to look at me.
I wasn't, I was, I was.
The one who's not here.
Yeah, that's right.
The one who's not here gets appointed, that's the way it works.
I, I move that.
Can we do that now?
Commissioner Strongman be appointed to that position.
I would, I would vote in favor of that. Okay, um, wow, we're going off the rails totally here. Um, any other announcements, comments? All right, with that, I will adjourn this meeting at 7:06. Thank you all, appreciate it.